You're good to go.
All right. The meeting of the Township of Presipony Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, April 3rd, 2023, it is 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Councilman De Piero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter and Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right. If we could stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people of our land.
Thank you very much. All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody here from the general public who had something that they would like to bring to the attention of this board that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We have some correspondence from Stephen Tombalakian of Wiener Law Group with regard to application 20:520, one campus associates, three campus drive, block 202, lot 312, one campus drive, block 202, lot 3, lot 7, seven campus drive, block 202, lot 3.8, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances requesting two-year extension, followed by another correspondence from the same individual and group regarding application 20:516. I won't go through all that. We had sort of tabled this before because of concerns about the fact that this impinges on the, on our affordable housing requirements. As I understand it, we have contacted Ed Snakes and he has indicated, Nora, that there was no objection to giving the two-year.
That is correct. You have an email from him sitting by your stuff if you'd like to take a peek at it. And we do have someone here from Wiener Law Group. It's not Mr. Tombalakian, but an associate.
All right. Oh, there we go. I'm gonna take a moment to read this. Okay, so what we were concerned about, if I recall correctly, was that what would put us afoul of the previous agreement that we had made. And here we are getting a professional opinion from the planner that we have hired to be our planner for the affordable housing, that he believes that granting the extensions would not hurt.
Correct. So it's okay for us to approve these, but I think it's a good idea to check first.
Believe me, you know, if we had run afoul of the court decision or of the agreement, that would have probably run into lots of other expenses to straighten it out.
Yes.
So, all right.
Follow up for motion to accept the request for a, is it two, one-year?
No.
Extensions?
Two, two, two-year extend, one for application 20:520, asking for a two-year extension.
A two-year extension. They both were two-year extensions.
Yeah, it was just two one-year extensions or a two-year extension.
Right.
Yep.
I said it right?
Yep.
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Napolitano.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
De Piero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, so. Figured you'd solve your problem quickly.
Easy as a tris.
Good. All right. Next, we have correspondence received from Robert Long in regard to application number 21:526, Jasmine Polanco, Four Mohawk Avenue, block 548, lot 6, minor site plan with C variance, requesting a, I guess it's a 90-day extension of a resolution approved from April 15th, 2023 to May 14th, 2023.
None of those dates make sense.
Did I, did I misread that or, because that makes no sense.
It makes like 30 days.
30 days.
Well, it also hasn't happened yet, so.
So under the, this is for a minor subdivision, under the municipal land use law, the applicant has 190 days from the date the resolution was memorialized to actually record the subdivision deed. And in the letter, it says that they've had delays in doing that, and so the board can grant an extension of up to a year for that. So that's why they're only asking for the 90-day extension, so they could have time to record.
Historically, when we've had stuff like this, we've actually granted them a little longer than that, but are you comfortable with the 90 days for them?
If, if that's what they're requesting, I would hope that they could always come back for another.
All right, does somebody wish to?
Do we need to change the date to May 14th?
Yeah, I don't remember the date of the date.
Cause April 15th to May 14th is one month.
It'll be, I'm not sure if I, where do I see that?
What was their approval date?
Says 90-day extension, but that's only 30 days.
I think in, in the letter, it doesn't have, it doesn't reference May 14th, so I'm not sure. That must have just been a typo, but we'll just do 90-day extension from April 15th.
All right, across, how many?
All right, was there, was there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move the motion to approve extension for application number 21:526, Jasmine Polanco, Four Mohawk Avenue, block 548, lot 6, minor site plan with variance requesting 90-day extension.
Okay, so you're moving the 90-day extension.
Yep.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second, Math.
All right, I'm gonna just simply say all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we're good on that. All right, resolution, we have application number 22, 536 and 23, 503, and we have in our packet the people who are allowed to vote on this. Oops, sorry. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to deny the resolution for application number 22.536, Ashutosh Desai and Stephen Bukert, 192 Congit Street, block 716, lot 1.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second, Didich.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, then, for application 23:503, Forge Hill, is there someone willing to make the motion for the major soil moving permit?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move the motion to approve the application number 23:503, Forge Hill Construction Inc., 182 Fox Hill Road, block 102.01, lot 6, major soil moving permit.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mealy.
All right, I'm gonna ask for all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, all right, we can move forward. That brings us to our one agenda item, well, two agenda items, actually. Application number 22, spot 521, William Horstman, 89 Lake Shore Drive, block 371, lot 6, minor subdivision with C variance for a two-lot subdivision.
Daniel Parker from Parker Engineering, this is Tracy Horstman here, Horstman, on behalf of the, providing Horstman to his daughter.
Oh, okay.
Could you please raise your right hand? Both, you can both be sworn in at the same time. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yep.
All right, and could you please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with some background on your experience and education?
Daniel Parker, P A R K E R, New Jersey Professional Land Surveyor, worked for Parker Engineering and Surveying, been a land surveyor since 1991, have a bachelor's science degree in geoscience from Penn State University.
And then? Tracy Horstman, Lambeider, L A M B E S E D E R.
I'm sorry, would you spell it again? Use the microphone, so we can hear. Thank you.
Lambeider, L A M B E S E D E R.
Thank you.
And your address for the record.
It's 23 Bailey's Mill Road, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, code 7920.
Thank you.
I'm assuming your license is current and?
That's correct, current, current license, surveyor.
All right, does there anybody who have any questions about the surveyor's qualifications as a surveyor? Hearing and seeing none. We do have, do we have any waivers?
No.
So we don't have any waivers to deal with, which is good. Tell us about what you're trying to accomplish.
What we're, what we're trying to accomplish is we're trying to do a minor subdivision of a property located on 87 Lake Shore Drive. 89 Lake Shore Drive. It's currently has one two-story dwelling. It's a through lot with frontage on Lake Shore Drive and Groverville Road. We are, the property contains 11,470 square feet.
Would you pull the microphone a little closer, please?
The property contains 11,470 square feet and is located in the R4 zone. What we're proposing to do is to create two lots, one lot fronting on each street, with the current home being on the Lake Shore Drive property. That would be the lot that's going to require the variances. We'd be creating a lot on Groverville Road that is conforming. The existing house is going to remain, as well as the utilities to that house, no changes to the utilities to the existing home, and we'll be providing new utilities to the house on Groverville Road. The new lot on Groverville Road will, will require 16 trees to be removed as part of the development of that lot. I don't know if there's any questions about that, or if we can continue the, the variances that we're requesting are for, there's two for the exist, the property the way it exists now. The current house is 15.4 feet from the property, from the street line of Lake Shore Drive, and the requirement is 25 feet. In addition, the current driveway is, is up onto the property line right now, so we would need a variance for the five-foot setback. And the, the three proposed variances that we would need would be for lot area for the house fronting on Lake Shore Drive, as well as building coverage, which we would need, which we're proposing at 24% versus the requirement of 20%, and the total lot coverage, which we're proposing at 53.9% versus a requirement of 40%. In addition, the lot fronting on Lake Shore is 5,470.2 square feet versus 6,000 required for the zone.
There's a, a bit here that has to be dealt with, obviously with some variances and some questions. I'm gonna turn to my board and ask them to start asking some questions. Mr. Math, you look like you've got a few.
Yes, I guess the first question, I guess I understand what you've got in terms of proposing lot for 6.02 being fully conforming, but the lot line itself isn't really, I don't know if only these were compatible, but consistent with the other lot lines in the neighborhood? I guess from what I can tell from the map, there's only one other lot line and it's on an angle, and I respect, that's probably because Lake Shore Drive is on an angle, it's not, it's not totally perpendicular to Groverville Road. Did you have any consideration for continuing that lot line and what would that do to the areas in question and the potential variances for the existing lot?
I believe it would just shift the variance for the lot area from the, the lot with the home on it to the new proposed lot.
So, no matter what happens, one of the lots is gonna have substandard area, correct?
That's correct. But the entire property has only 11,470, and the zoning requires 6,000 for each, so.
No, I understand that, and I also understand that it's probably a result of the fact that Lake Shore Drive is not 90 degrees to the property. But you're also asking for variance relief for both building at lot coverage for the existing dwelling and putting the substandard size area on that lot. I guess if you did shift it to the point where that lot was conforming, how much could you reduce the variances?
I think you're squeezing a balloon here.
So, so basically, the dwelling would have, the building coverage would be about, what, 22%? And then the impervious coverage would be just under 50% if you had a 6,000 square foot lot for 6.01?
Right, it would go right from like 51, it would be, go from 53.9 to 51, 51.9 or 50.9, and the, the building would go to about 21%, which would still be over.
I mean, it would still be over.
It would be more conforming, though.
Yeah, and it also has an existing non-conformity for setback, but that's the shape of the lot that really causes that.
Correct. Uh, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I mean, just from my perspective, I would much rather, if one lot has to have substandard area, have the lot that nothing's built on yet and give people the opportunity to stay within the zoning for that, instead of creating too much variance for one lot.
I don't think, there would, there wouldn't make a difference for us if we make that change, you know? I mean, we can easily make that change and not.
But, and the other thing that I like about it is that it takes the lot line between, that it's next to it, and continues the lot line, as opposed to creating a new jog in lot lines.
Okay.
But that's just my preference, so I, I'm just one member of the board.
We wouldn't have an issue with that.
So that means, that means the new, excuse me, the new lot would then, I'm sorry, the proposed lot then would be too close to the patio that's there? Is that accurate? Is that why you had it set up that way to begin with? So you're gonna bring that new lot further towards the house that's there now?
No, the new lot would be going closer to Groverville.
Gotcha. But we ran it angle instead of 90 degrees. It's a lot more. Thank you.
So it should be at least slightly further away from the existing patio.
Right, it's gonna go the opposite.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
Right, it might be a little closer when it's towards, to the lot line for lot four, but it'll be a bit further, and the angle should make it so that overall it's further away from the patio.
Okay.
Okay. I actually appreciate the idea of taking the new lot and making that the lot that has to be, that has more inconsistency to deal with, and the old lot just has the pre-existing issues. That makes sense to me. Other members of the board have questions?
I have, I have one. Thank you. So the lots on Grover, Groverville, lot 5, and I assume lot 7 is Groverville also, maybe it's Lake Shore. You're, you're gonna be removing some trees from the area? Will those two homes see any more unusual pools of water than they had before with the removal of the trees and?
Uh, no, as part of the, the review letter from the engineer, we've agreed to put a dry well in the, the rear of the new lot with an easement through the lot that fronts on Lake Shore Drive with the overflow pipe that goes directly to the drain inlet.
Thank you.
Jennifer, you have a?
Um, yes, one question. The, the proposed lot 6.02, the layout section has a driveway, a proposed future driveway. What's the setback from the property line on the proposed driveway? Is it going all the way over?
Uh, no, it's, it's supposed to be conforming, I believe it's a lot five feet off the property.
Five feet?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as it's five feet, it looked like it was a lot closer. I don't have my scale. My voice is a pleasure.
We're gonna go to the page where you want to see the driveway.
I had it scaled at five feet. Does it scale to five feet? Yeah, okay.
Good, because we're not granting him a, a variance for that, so.
Right, well, that's why I wanted to make sure that wasn't another variance.
Okay. Anyone down this side? Winter, do you have some planning?
I have a question about the proposed house on the new lot. Do, do you have a house picked out at this point, or is this just a typical footprint?
Yeah, we just, it's a typical footprint. I think we supplied there's an architecture plan of a typical house, but I don't, other than that, it's not.
It's set in stone at this point?
No.
Because if the lot line gets moved, probably with this footprint created a new building variance.
Well, if, if we keep the same, same building envelope, yes.
Yes, so you'd have to bring down the size of that.
Yeah, right, we, our, our building coverage would have to be smaller, and our impervious coverage would have to be smaller to conform.
Just as long as, make sure that's clear. And the other issue is that on the existing lot, the driveway currently corners off onto neighboring lot 7, would you be able to rectify that to be on the property?
And that should be a variance too, because that's five feet.
Yeah, they already need the variance for the setback. Because even if they fix it on the other property, it's still right on, on the edge.
I didn't see it in the chart.
Actually, that brings up an interesting question. If you have to adjust the driveway anyway, I mean, it's 20, 21 feet wide now, could it be narrower thereby reducing the, the impervious coverage? By my quick calc, I think it would be a 4% or 5% reduction if you took off five feet from the, the edge of it.
It could, it could, but the one issue that we would have, and the reason why that railroad tie is angled and it's over, is because of the, the layout of the road. If we come straight out, it'll just make it very difficult to turn into the driveway. It's just that, that the catch, that drain inlet is like right up on the property line. You know, typically, they're, you know, anywhere from five to 10 feet in front of the property line, but this one is very close to the property line, and it could just have be, have an issue with turning into that, coming from the southerly, the southerly side of the lot.
How long has that condition existed?
I don't.
I would think a long time, it was my great-grandmother's house.
So it's been there for more than 20 years, say?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to, because I, I agree with you that, that, you know, the site distances and the turning radiuses make it so that having a little bit of a, a turn there may be reasonable, but we can't grant variances on somebody else's property.
Correct. And we're not asking for that, we're just, we would just like to be able to just leave it the way it is right now.
It would still be granting the variance for the pre-existing line of the rest of the driveway.
But that wouldn't necessarily grant them the, the existing driveway that's on the other property.
No.
That is a function of whether or not it's had adverse possession or anything else for a length of time, whether there's a, it sounds to me like nobody's gonna make them move it if it isn't us.
Patios also would be another variance, because it's in the 10-foot setback. Patios have to be, unless you angle it like Gordon said, but.
Well, that's the existing patio, so that would be an existing question based on a new lot line.
But a new, a new lot line would be a new variance.
Right.
Just because it's not listed, so that's.
Well, we'd need to make sure that.
That's four, five, six variances now in that lot.
I mean, that would have been an issue even, even if they hadn't tilted the line.
No, it would have gone all, it goes all the way straight through, so.
No, I guess, I, I guess from what I understand, you're saying is that what's proposed in front of us on plans violates the 10 feet, but if we change the lot line in the back to be, continue the lot line next to it, we may actually have 10 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We may be able to modify the patio, too.
Okay. I mean, but my quick calc, if, if the lot 601 becomes 6,000 square feet, and you took five feet off the edge of the driveway to make the driveway conforming, just a straight line down it, obviously continuing to the existing curb cut opening, you could get the building coverage down to 44%. That's only 10% over our zoning permit, what, what zoning permits, instead of 53% as proposed. And then the building would be 1% or 2% over as, as you indicated.
What, what are you suggesting, Gordon?
Well, I guess the discussion I had earlier about making the existing lot 6,000 square feet by changing that rear property line and continuing the neighbor's property line across, and making the, the existing dwelling on a 6,000 square foot lot, making the new dwelling, the new proposed dwelling, the undersized lot, the undersized lot. If you took five feet off the edge of the driveway, because it's 21 feet wide now, and it's gravel, which is good because our ordinance considers that pavement, but it does allow some water to drain through, but if you took it to five feet off the edge of the property line, as required by our ordinance typically, you could get the lot coverage down by 300 square feet, which would take you down to 44% lot coverage. And I think the dwelling, I think, well, it's 1,310 square feet over 6,000 square feet, I got 22%, so that's, both of them are only 10% over what we allow.
Okay, and what does that do to the new lot?
The new lot is gonna be undersized slightly by 10%, it'll be 5,470, and that just means that one of the lot lines, instead of being 100 feet, is gonna be. and that just means that one of the lot lines, instead of being a hundred feet, is gonna be less than that and the building envelope is just gonna be a little smaller. But they could still build, I think, a reasonable home within the lot coverage of fifty-four hundred square feet. That means they can do eleven hundred square foot building footprint.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, that, that makes sense.
Okay.
I mean, I think if you did that, you could eliminate, you could really reduce the magnitude of a lot of the requested variances.
Yeah, we'd, we'd be agreeable to, you know, changing the rear line to, and, you know.
Yeah, ordinarily, I wouldn't be ever proposing a, an angled rear line, but in this case, the neighbor has one. So continuing it makes a lot more planning sense to me than, than, uh, you know, than, than, um, making a ninety-degree, making one really good lot and one lot full of non-conformities.
Any questions or Mr. Math, uh, Neely?
Our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, in his report, I don't know if you have it in front of you, page three, item fifteen, he questions who owns and maintains the chain-linked fence along the Easterly property line.
I would say based on its location, it's owned by the neighbors, it's on their property.
That makes sense from the drawings, so.
Yeah, I just had a, a question going back to the driveway. Um, it looks like it scales about fifteen feet from the corner property line, front corner, over to your existing retaining wall or, not retaining wall, but curving, wood curve that you have there on the property. Um, I, I, I kinda disagree that you need to keep that driveway over the property line. I think fifteen-foot curb cut should be sufficient to make that maneuver into the driveway. Like, pull, pull the driveway onto the property, that, that, that little triangular flare that you mentioned before.
Okay.
And then, as Mr. Math mentioned, then you can taper the driveway in to five feet from the property line from that, that, that corner. Like, it, the driveway would be up to the front corner of the property and then it would taper away from the property line, uh, to be five foot away.
Okay.
Okay, so you're basically just suggesting that that triangle be just simply moved?
Yeah, right, right.
So that it's on Lot six point oh rather than on?
The adjoining lot.
Lot seven?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the board of this? From our professionals, any, any questions from our professionals? Do we have sufficient here?
Um, so, just to clarify, you would be willing to move the driveway five feet, the existing gravel driveway five feet in all the way, oh, up the entire driveway? Or just at that base, at the entry?
We, we'd like, we'd like to start the angle at the, near the, near the property line and then angle in just like, uh, like the way the current railroad tie that comes off the, the inlet, we'd just like to slide that over so that it would be, it'd start like at our property corner and then angle in and then up.
That makes sense, so at that property.
So we would still technically need a variance for the, for, because part of our driveway would be within the five feet.
Yep. Correct.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Any other comments from our professionals or from our board?
Mr. Chairman, just a question for ourselves. So if we changed the lot line, it would change a lot of things. How would we go about approving or not approving?
Approving which?
Approving anything, right? I mean, variance may be different now, right? Like, both lots may be non-conforming, we don't, I don't know that, like, if you recalculate it.
We're gonna approve it based on the application with the, with the modifications included. Our professionals will walk through what, what is necessary and what the actual numbers are gonna be.
Okay.
So we're basically approving the application with amendments and then our professionals walk through and give us the exact numbers that we have.
Because the setback and everything will change, so when we say we approve, what are we approving here?
Well, I think the only setback that would change if we changed the lot line is gonna be the setback of the patio to the adjoining property. And I think we could, it sounds like if we ask them to ensure that there's ten feet, regardless, irrespective, we can make that go away by adjusting the patio.
Yeah, we, we can do that.
I don't think they're gonna have to.
Yeah, they may not have to when you draw it out, but it, it'll be close.
I don't, I don't think we need variance for that. I mean, we could, you know, we can modify it so that we, we, we would not need a variance for that, for the patio.
I mean, because the lot line is gonna come a little closer to the house on what I'll call the north.
Yep, northeast, yeah.
Northeast, northwest corner. And it's gonna be further away on the northeast corner. Or whatever, see, north. So to the east, it's gonna be further away, to the west, it's gonna be closer, but it's, but it's far enough away, I think, from the patio to make it so that the ten feet is not gonna be an issue, but we can, but you agreed to make sure that it's not an issue even if it is.
Correct, right.
Okay.
And if, if you do take that five feet off the, the edge of the driveway all the end, you can probably get the square footage down to the point where you can probably get the forty percent, or if you took it off the driveway. I think we could actually eliminate a variance, you're, you're close.
Yeah.
Because I think, right now, you're twenty-nine seventy, and if you're a six thousand square foot lot, you can go up to twenty-four hundred. I mean, would you be amenable to doing that? I think, uh, you know, the building coverage is one thing, but lot coverage. I guess the bottom line is you have to remove five hundred and seventy square feet of coverage. Now, if you're taking seventy feet times five, that's like most, that's like a big portion. I mean, just out of curiosity, is the intention to sell that house or is, I guess your father, you say your father lives there? And he's gonna stay there?
No, he doesn't live there.
Oh, okay.
My grandfather, or my grandmother lives there, but he owns it.
Oh, he owns it, but you see your intention is ultimately to sell it anyway?
Um, possibly, eventually, or rent it.
Okay, but, bottom line is there's no one who's gonna object if, if the driveway or patio gets smaller, I guess is what I'm getting at. No one's gonna notice, I guess, nobody's living there now.
Is it a rental right now?
No. I don't have a kid in the house right now.
Okay.
I mean, it's useful to reduce coverage and things like that, and, but it's still gravel, so I'm not too, too concerned about that.
Gravel though grows.
Hmm?
Gravel grows.
Gravel grows, that's true.
It grows and grows, very easily.
You need scraps.
Yeah, yeah, each year.
Well, we can have that in the discussion of, of, of whatever amendments or requests that we have to put in there. Is there anything else we need? Are there any members of the public who have any questions to this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Is that your case?
Uh, yeah, unless, if anybody wanted to address any of the questions from the planner, there was a couple of.
Why don't you walk through the questions from the planner and then we'll make sure that nobody wants to address anything further.
Okay, the, um, the one with, is on, it's, uh, the planner's, uh, letter from June second, twenty twenty-two, and it's on the second page, number sixteen, Highlands exemption, exemption determination. And I think it's covered, I think the engineer covers, um, covers it. He said that, um, at the bottom of his first page in his last, uh, section, it's not a major development and it's exempt from the Highlands review.
Two lot subdivisions, I do the Highlands reviews, two lot subdivisions are exempt. I didn't do a report, but, because I didn't need to.
Okay.
Two lot exemptions are always exempt, two lot subdivisions. I don't think we had any other questions. A lot of the questions from the June letter were addressed in the updates.
Yes, yeah, correct. That was the only question that I had from, from the planner's letter.
Anything further? Questions from the board, questions from the professionals?
So I just wanna make sure we have the coverage numbers we're looking at for, um, new lot six point oh one. So we're gonna make that the six thousand square foot lot, correct?
Yeah.
So the, you'll need the minimum lot area for six point oh two. We're just gonna swap that, so that would be the five thousand four hundred and seventy. Um, for six point oh one, you'll still need the minimum front yard setback, the driveway setback, you're going to agree to the five-foot setback up into that point where.
Till it angles, till it gets the five, five feet away, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then that'll bring the maximum, the building coverage down to a little shy of twenty-two percent, so it'll be granting a variance for twenty-two percent building coverage still.
Correct.
For six point oh one. And Mr. Math, you can back me up on the calculations here. Um, so I had the existing, without making any changes to the driveway, at forty-nine percent. If we're removing that five foot, it's gonna come in a little shy of forty-four percent.
That's, yeah, that's exactly the number I'm talking about.
So be granting, um, for the maximum impervious coverage of forty-four percent.
Yes.
And I think that covers the variances.
Correct.
Plus the pre-existing fifteen point four.
Yes, the front yard setback.
Yes.
Okay.
So in, for six point oh one, instead of a maximum building coverage of twenty-three point nine, it would just be twenty-two. And for maximum improved lot coverage, it would, instead of fifty-three point eight, it'll be forty-four percent. Yes. Okay. And then the applicant's okay with otherwise building a conforming lot or having to come back here for other additional variances on Lot six point oh two?
Correct, yes.
Okay, now, is that your case?
That's our case.
All right. Ask, ask one more question?
Yes.
Uh, the new, the new house that's gonna be on Groverville, it's, uh, gonna be a two-story home?
That's what we.
Okay, I just want to know, are there other two-story homes in that area? Or this is like the only two-story home?
Um.
And we'll look at a place.
Current houses, two-story.
There's other two-story homes in the area? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to this case? In favor of this case, hearing and seeing none? Do you wish to sum or is that your case?
That's our case.
All right, this closes the evidentiary portion of the hearing tonight. Uh, is there anybody who wishes to go have discussion or does somebody wanna move a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the motion.
All right.
Does anybody else want to comment?
Well, I'd like to actually have our attorney list the amendments to.
I was gonna defer to that, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So it would be a motion to grant the application as amended. Lot six point oh one will be adjusted, so the rear lot line creates a six thousand square foot lot. The applicant's requesting a front yard setback, driveway setback, a building coverage of twenty-two percent and improved lot coverage of forty-four percent, all on Lot six point oh one. And Lot six point oh two will be four, five thousand four hundred and seventy square feet and will require a variance for lot area. The applicant also agreed that they would, uh, would modify the patio if needed, um, so it's not within the ten-foot setback of the lot, the rear lot line.
Okay, because we're giving you the, in percentages, so then the where and how you move the driveway is simply to fit it, fit within the percentage granted?
Correct, yep.
And you're also going to try to be conforming with the five-foot setback for the driveway, except obviously at the corner?
Correct.
All right, so we're, we're granting that much, right?
We'd also, that would also be bound kind of by the, uh, the lot coverage too.
Yes.
You know, that would.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, shall I enumerate the motion? I don't think we did that yet.
Go for it.
Okay. A motion to approve application number twenty-two point five two one, William Horseman, eighty-nine Lake Shore Drive, Block three seventy-one, Lot Six, minor subdivision with C variance for a two-lot subdivision and with conditions as enumerated by our board planner and our board attorney.
Second, the Valtana.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Yes.
Calacanau?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Neely?
No.
No? Didn't work.
Yes. And the result is the granting of the variance for the subdivision, I should say. What other steps? I don't think there's anything else. I mean, Nora will have the, uh, once we pass the resolution at the next meeting, I guess. Then that should be that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Now we move on to the next item on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd permission, I'd sit here and address the board more effectively here.
That makes sense to me. So we're moving on to our non-condemnation preliminary redevelopment investigation for Block seven thirty-seven, Lot Three, study area for Sippany Troy Hills. So if you could.
So if the board, uh, the board may remember that back in, I think it was August, the governing body sent the Board a directive to conduct the investigation and hold this hearing for Block seven thirty-seven, Lot Three, which is, um, pardon, this is not moving. Which is a property located, it's a nine point one-three acre lot identified, again, um, seven thirty-seven, Lot, Block thirty-seven thirty-seven, Lot Three, two four nine Pomeroy Road. It hosts currently a ninety-six thousand six hundred square foot, single-story building and it is currently in the SED five A zone. You, as a board, then directed us in October of twenty twenty-two to undertake the investigation, um, which we have done, which you have in front of you this evening. And under the requirements of the redevelopment law, we're supposed to conduct a notice public hearing to find whether the property, um, the study area, the property in question, meets any one of the eight statutory criteria under the New Jersey Local Redevelopment and Housing Law that is required, um, to create a finding. To create a finding of need for redevelopment. This is an existing condition study, it is not talking about what could go there, it's simply. Does the building and the site meet any one of the eight criteria? Your job here tonight is to make that finding of fact. And then make a recommendation to the governing body. That the area does or does not conform. And the governing body will then declare the area to be in need of redevelopment or not. Once that happens, presumably they declare it in need of redevelopment, we would then prepare a redevelopment plan for the site. And then that would come back to you for review and recommendation and a finding of consistency with the master plan. It would then go back to the governing body to be adopted by ordinance. Again, you have the document in front of you, the document was submitted, it was placed on file with the clerk. If I were to go through this entire document, Nora would kill me. And I believe some of you would too. So what I'm going to do is just hit the highlights, but for the record, can we confirm that the, the full document is in the record and it's part of the conversation?
Yes, the area needs study has been incorporated into the record.
Thank you. So. If you go to. Page 14 of the document, we have a number of photographs. That speak to the conditions of the site. We have cracked glazing and damaged windows, which is on page 14. We have a whole number of pictures showing various evidences of water infiltration and mold. Throughout the building, page 15, 16, and 17, and I apologize, some of the pictures, they can come out as good as we would like. On page 18, we show evidence of cracked exterior masonry. And moisture damage, which obviously then leads to more mold and potential for. For vermin infestation, certainly water infiltration. On page 20, we have. Areas where vermin, open areas, areas from inside the building to the outside where. Potentially vermin could enter the building, certainly moisture could enter the building. On page 21, we have open floor pits, open floor pits and water damaged concrete floor. We also show exterior site damage and the building deterioration. And then on page 22, we're showing evidence of potential contamination. We also, on page 23, have a letter from Jones Lang LaSalle. Which is, good evening, Mr. Which indicates that the building. Is not marketable in its current condition and would require substantial renovation. Jones Lang LaSalle is a national firm that specializes in the sale and leasing of real estate. Their local office focuses on northern and central New Jersey. We speak a little bit about wetlands areas, we speak a little bit about contamination. That contamination, pardon me. The owner has gotten a number of no further action letters from DEP. But that was limited to the contamination that was found, it was not clear how much. Or how deep that investigation went, literally and figuratively, to determine. The, whether there is any existing contamination. So that is an unknown at this time. There is some measure of habitat that would have to be addressed with DEP in terms of. Buffering and whether there is any need for buffering on, from the habitat for threatened endangered species. That's really beyond our review under this preliminary investigation, but we did recognize it's going to be a DEP issue. We then go in and recognize that. The state plan, the state development and redevelopment plan designates our area, our study area as a PA1. Metropolitan study area, uh, planning area. And metropolitan, PA1 metropolitan planning areas are, under the state plan. Designed to provide much of the state's future redevelopment, revitalize city, cities and towns, promote growth in compact forms. Stabilize older suburbs, redesign areas of sprawl and protect the character of existing stable communities. That will become important as we go through a little bit further. Starting on page three, as I said, there are, page 33. There are eight criteria under which lands can be determined to be in need of redevelopment. I'm just going to go through for brevity's sake, the criteria that we believe this building meets. So the first one is redevelopment criteria A. The generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, obsolescent. Or possess any of those characteristics. Or are conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions. We think the pictures speaks for them, speak for themselves. And then we, those pictures are reinforced by the findings of Jones Lang LaSalle. So the pictures show us substandard, unsanitary, dilapidated and obsolescent conditions. Jones Lang LaSalle tells us, in their opinion, that the building has varying ceiling heights, lack of modern mechanical infrastructure. It's an older building, it is configured for one use. Throughout the entire building. It is functionally obsolescent and the overall physical conditions support the opinion. That what they term is the asset, the building, is obsolete in today's market. Based on all of those criteria and all of those findings, that leads us to a conclusion and recommendation that criteria A applies. We then go on to criteria B, and I'm just going to. It's somewhat long, but the meat of it is the discontinuance of use of a building previously used for commercial retail, shopping. Office parks, manufacturing or industrial purposes. This building used to be a large-scale printer, so we believe that certainly falls under industrial purposes, not so much manufacturing, but it's light industrial. As we said before, the previous use of this building is now discontinued, the building sits, as we sit here today, sits vacant. Again, Jones Lang LaSalle. Quote, anticipates a protracted re-tenanting process in order to possibly find a suitable tenant for the asset, given its practical obsolescence. Accordingly, and close quote, accordingly absent extensive renovation process, the study area in its current condition. In the language of the redevelopment law is untenable. For those reasons, we believe that we can render that, recommend that criteria B applies. Criteria D is very similar to A. Areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding. Faulty arrangement of or design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities. Pardon me, excessive land coverage. Dilatarius land use or obsolete layout, or any combination of those or other factors are detrimental to the. Health, safety, welfare, morals of the community. We had talked about, under criteria A, the condition of the building. And how the condition itself is dilapidated, obsolescent, obsolete layout. We also find that the lack of productive use for this building is detrimental to the welfare of the community. It provides no jobs, it supports no positive. Productive use, it's just sitting there vacant and deteriorating. In addition, the outside of the building, not the building itself, but the area around the building is not fenced in. And that can potentially become an attractive nuisance. Being detrimental to, detrimental to the safety, health, morals and welfare of the community. We also talked about the undetermined level of contamination. In the study area, which also is potentially detrimental to the health and welfare of the community. So for those reasons collectively. We can recommend that criteria D applies, so we have A, B and D so far. We then move on to criteria H, which tells us the designation of a delineated area. Can be in need of redevelopment if it is consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law and recommend, or recommendation. Again, we talked a little bit a while ago about how the. Study area is a PA1 metropolitan area under the state plan. And we went through all of the goals for PA1 areas under the state plan, which tell us that this section of the town and this site specifically. Is consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law and regulation, meaning the state plan. So with all of that as background. The redevelopment law says that any one of the eight criteria specified in the law. Can trigger a need for redevelopment. Here we have criteria A, criteria B, D and H, so that's four, so we hit four out of the eight. For those reasons, we recommend to you and ask that you recommend to the governing body. That block 737, lot three conforms with those criteria and should be, or qualifies as being designated. An area in need of redevelopment under the redevelopment law. Then we would further ask that your recommendation include. The next step, which be, should the governing body make that designation? That they authorize the preparation of a redevelopment plan for this then redevelopment area. And that is all I have, Nora, I hope I was short enough for you, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
So the, if we tell the governing body that we've concluded that this is an area in need of redevelopment. And when they come up with a redevelopment plan, that will be where it'll be determined. What they think is reasonable to put there.
Correct, they, the redevelopment plan will talk about municipal goals and objectives. It'll talk about why the township is doing this, it will lay out permitted uses. And it will lay out bulk standards and a whole number of other things that are required to be addressed by the redevelopment law. That you will then see, review and make a recommendation for, to go back to, back to that.
So essentially, we're just determining that this particular piece of land no longer works within the confines of our master plan?
Well, that's not necessarily true, because part of the redevelopment plan process is to determine. And make a statement of consistency with the master plan. So I wouldn't go, Mr. Chairman, as far as you're saying, but we have the ability, it certainly doesn't work. Within the context of the building as it sits here today and, and our development ordinance, our zoning ordinance, which lays out what it could be. So, but that is all in the future, for tonight, we're simply asking you to opine on the existing condition study.
Makes sense to me. All right, are there members of the board, Mr. Math?
I guess I have two questions, I guess first, do you know how long this building's been vacant? Did you find that out at all or not?
Um, it has been drawn down on its staff for some time. It has been vacant, do you remember exactly? It, it has recently become vacant.
Okay.
Little over a year.
Geez, I got in bad shape in a year. How, how common is it to have a, a. A area in need of redevelopment investigation for only one property?
Very common, happens a lot, and it happens especially when, or, it happens a lot and it happens when you have large parcels. Such as this.
Okay.
That. Has fallen into deteriorated condition, but I, I do a number of these for a single lot.
I guess, but depending on what happens in the plan to redevelop, subdivision of the property could become a possibility then, I guess.
That is correct.
So then it could theoretically be more than one property later?
It could be.
Yeah, all right.
We don't have an answer for that right now.
Okay, and right now, we're only really being asked if, to sort of confirm that it meets the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment, is that correct?
That's the limited purpose for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And this is not spot zoning either.
Other members of the board have any questions?
Do you know what year the building was built?
I don't specifically, but it, it looks to be. Somewhere between the 60s and 70s.
You mentioned many things about vermin problems, that does, that's probably not part of our jurisdiction, but does the vermin problem get taken care of first, and then they do what they're supposed to do to the building? Because I feel like what's going to happen is they're going to start doing something to it, and then all the vermin's going to go to the buildings around it.
Well.
How does that work, you know?
We did not see any evidence of vermin, but we did see open areas. That could be attracted to vermin or certainly water infiltration.
Okay.
Well, if it's an area of need of redevelopment, they could tear it down, this building, build a nice clean new one.
That's entirely true.
So they don't have to worry about rat traps first, they just go and tear it down?
No, that's part of the demolition process, you have to exterminate.
Yeah.
Some angry buildings around.
And frankly, given the amount of mold, I don't, you know, it would take a lot to remediate the building, to use it. In its current configuration.
That's just the mold you can see.
Yep. Any other questions by members of the board or comments? All right. Do we open this for comments, or is this just?
Well, you know what, the, the law requires substantial public notice, so we might as well open it despite the fact there's nobody here.
Get drinks on me, tell them.
Well, as, as has been noted, seeing, seeing no public here to participate, although we apparently have. An interested party in the audience. Mr. Inglisino, do you have any, anything you wish to comment before the, the board or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm assuming you're acting as an attorney and not as, as an expert witness who needs to be sworn in.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, Johnny Inglisino on behalf of Advance Realty, which is the contract purchaser of the property. And actually intends to redevelop the property in concert with the current owner. We'd just like to put in some context, this is a vacant building. The plan is to redo a state-of-the-art industrial building on the site where there's an industrial building. That is outdated, for which there really is no market, so we're not looking, you know, for a drastic change of use here. We're looking to, you know, do something that's state-of-the-art industrial under a redevelopment plan. As was stated by Mr. Weiser, the building is vacant, there really is no, no market for this type of building, it's obsolete. And so that's why we're here, as part of trying to transform older vacant buildings into more productive use.
Got it, okay. Any, Mr. Math, you look like you have something.
So if the intention is to build industrial, it can't, whatever is there can't be done under existing zoning?
No, it can't be done under existing zoning, no, not, not under the existing zoning.
Okay.
Even if the use is permanent? Even if the use is permitted? Even if the use is permitted?
There's bulk standards, there's other considerations.
Okay.
All right. Any questions on this?
Just one comment. Despite the lack of public, the developer's attorney did submit an affidavit of mailing and publication in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing law.
Good to put it on the record.
Yep.
All right. Anything else you was to say, Mr. Weiser?
No. The board is required to, obviously required to have a vote, you're required to have a resolution. That resolution goes to the governing body. Ultimately, that gets packaged with the governing body's action, and it goes to DCA for final approval, but the action that you're taking here tonight does govern for you.
Okay. I guess this closes the evidentiary portion of this presentation.
I would believe it does.
Is there anybody on the board who wishes to make a comment, or is there anybody who wishes to move that we find that this is an area in need of redevelopment?
I'll make the motion. Block 737, Lot 3, is in need of redevelopment at this time, and the planning board would make that recommendation to the governing body.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Bravero?
Yes.
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Calacanou?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Dinmore?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I don't think there's anything else in front of this point. Nora, you have anything further?
No, I do not.
So, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Is everybody mistaken? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody not in favor? Nora's gonna kick you out anyway.
You're free to stay here, that's all.